All to order, the regularly scheduled meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission for February 27th. And first thing on the agenda will be to figure out who's here.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Here.
Watson? Mattingly? Probst?
Finally.
Rollinger?
Present.
Schrader?
Here.
Standard?
Here.
And Vogel. Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum with five members present this evening.
Okay, will you join us from the audience and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance before we start the rest of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions to that? Hearing, none. Do I have a motion to approve the meetings? Some minutes? Okay. Say it. All those in favor, sign five as saying aye?
Aye.
That's approved.
Thank you.
We shall go on to item four, requests and/or public hearings. And I'll read this one, I believe.
Thank you, yes.
It's the ordinance number 1209, amending chapters 18 dot 6, 18 dot 9, and 18 dot 33 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to provide for accessory dwelling units in certain zone, districts within the city, providing, provided the accessory dwelling unit meets certain standards. And it's a legislative item. Sally?
Thank you. I have a PowerPoint this evening to walk through the proposed new legislation to provide for accessory dwelling units in certain areas, zones within Woodland Park. This is the public hearing for the ordinance number 1209. This began last September, on the 26th of September, with the City Council and the Planning Commission having a joint work session. And at the conclusion of that work session, which was actually led by Councilman Schaefer, who is here this evening, the City Council did charge the Planning Commission with the research and development of a ordinance for accessory dwelling units. We had three work sessions, and now this evening culminates with the public hearing. From here, it goes, moves on to the City Council with their first reading of the ordinance on March 6th, next Thursday, and the public hearing on the 20th. The benefits of accessory dwelling units are many. This will provide the city with additional types of options for housing. These are small accessory units, separate from the primary living quarters. It can be within the home, or an addition to the home, or a, an addition above a garage on the second floor. What Planning Commission decided was that you would not have detached accessory units for this point in time. They do provide for, an opportunity for senior homeowners to age in place. They're oftentimes called mother-in-law units, and they also provide for extra income if a person is purchased a home and they're able to have an accessory unit, then they can help with their mortgages. The forecast for housing demands are high in Woodland Park right now with the new Charis Bible College, but also the silver tsunami that is happening in our community, or our baby boomers as we move into retirement. We did look at other Colorado entities, and many of them do have ordinances specifically in this region. There's Colorado Springs, and Manitou Springs, Fountain Monument, as well as Teller County have some form or another that have accessory dwelling units. And I've handed out to you tonight a summary of six communities that compare with what we've proposed in Woodland Park, and they are pretty variable, but they do all have a component that deals with parking, an occupancy requirement, usually a design requirement. So there are quite a few similarities. We have included a density requirement in order to try to spread these units out throughout our community, and not concentrate them in any one neighborhood. There's very few communities that do that, other than Boulder. We looked at Boulder, and that's one thing that they do, and I'll show you a map later in the presentation. With that introduction, I would like to now step through the ordinance, the five-page ordinance, and touch on the highlights, and to let you know that we also had the Utilities Director take a look at your final draft, and he made one, one change, or recommends a change. And then the City Attorney also looked at this final draft, and the few red line changes that you had proposed, she has some disagreement with, and I will explain those to you as we get to those various points. You can see on this first slide, in the recitals portion, there are three recitals. In the second recital, the Planning Commission thought it would be good to add accessory in that second recital. The City Attorney said, no, we need to keep it out of that recital because we don't have it adopted yet. So you can't include it in this paragraph because it really doesn't exist in our code. We can only speak to residential dwelling units with this whereas. The last two recitals remain the same, and talking about, in the last one, the benefits for public health, safety, and welfare with these standards, she did like the change to minimize the potential impacts. That was a word change suggested by the commissioners. Moving into the heart, or the meat of the ordinance, the now-therefore's, section one is the definition for accessory dwelling unit, and we have been through that definition a number of times. You added or attached garage. Aaron Smith agreed that that was a good change, so it's staying in. Section two is the addition to the table of permitted uses, and adding under residential uses, a number five for accessory dwelling units, which are defined in the previous section that I just mentioned of the zoning regulations. These will be permitted uses by right in the suburban residential and urban residential, and then permitted conditionally, still administratively approved, but permitted conditionally in the neighborhood commercial, community commercial, central business, and PUD. And the reason it's permitted conditionally is that they only apply to an existing home, a single-family home, within those commercial areas. Section three of the ordinance gets into, or establishes the standards, beginning with 18 point 33, point 135A, which is the purpose statement for ADUs. The two changes that you had recommended to change the word mitigate to minimize stayed. Aaron Smith was fine with that, and also adding the words lower cost for that last Item B, or section B, under the standards, is about the requirement for a permit, and the requirement to have a zoning development permit. Aaron was not comfortable changing the word a person to an applicant, primarily because we don't define an applicant in the code, and it is better to keep this language generic. Everybody knows what a person is. So she would like to keep that language as she had originally written it. In section two of the permit requirement, changing the word, or adding the word to inform is fine. Moving on to number three, this is where the Utilities Director would like to remove a sentence that talked about the city determining that the water, and water supply and the sewage disposal facilities are adequate. It really is not the city's role to do that, that is the property owner, and so he was uncomfortable with that language. However, he added that we have a new tiered fee structure for tap fees, transportation capital fees, also stormwater fees and park fees, and that was instituted June 1st, 2012. And it is important that if somebody were to add an accessory dwelling unit, that we look at those fee structures. If the home was built after June 2012, and it was built under the tiered rate structure, that we can be able to collect additional fees if it moves to a different tier. And that could happen if there's a new bedroom added, and it jumps from three bedrooms to four bedrooms. That would move it from a tier two to a tier three, for example, with transportation capital fees and with park fees. So that was a good catch, to be able to add that language into the ordinance. And Aaron Smith, this afternoon, felt that we needed to tie it down specifically to ordinance number 1160, when those fees are applicable for homes built after 2012, June Item four is that we review the application for completeness. And then item five, we either approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the application, and the applicant has the ability to appeal the denial if they feel that there has been an error in our judgment or our decision for that call. Number six deals with building permits and certificate of occupancies, and whether those are required. So that section is about the process for the administrative review of a zoning development permit, or an application that comes into the office for an accessory dwelling unit. The next section is about an affidavit being signed by the owner upon approval, and then upon renewal every year. This is in order to check that the ADU is being used as it was said that it was going to be used as, and that they are following the standards. For example, the parking standard, if they lease their ADU to a family that maybe has two vehicles as opposed to one, then we need to ensure that they do have the two off-street parking spaces still avail, available on their site. So it's a good check on an annual basis, and that will be done prior to February 1st of each year. Section D of these standards are the specific standards or expectations for the ADUs. And the first one is design and appearance. What we hope to accomplish with this ordinance is that they, the ADU will blend into the neighborhood, it will be invisible, it will be compatible, and you will not even know that it is there. Because the design of this, the appearance will be compatible with the entire house and neighborhood. We did add one phrase in there regarding the detached garage, so that it, if the ADU is created by converting, we clarify the upper level of an existing detached garage. Then the exterior architectural design style, appearance, and character of the garage shall be maintained, just like the one is in the photo below. Number two is the owner occupancy requirements, and this says that the owner of the property must reside in either the ADU or in the primary residence. This is to prevent an investor who would purchase the property and then try to lease out both, both spaces. That is not the intent of an accessory dwelling unit. It's intended for the primary owner, or the owner, to live on the site. And Aaron Smith did not want to add ADU in the middle of this sentence, it should be kept at the end of the sentence, because the, she wanted to keep primary separate from the ADU. The other change in this paragraph is that if the ownership of the property is changed, then the new owner must either remove the ADU, or must reapply and sign that affidavit in order that the new owner is kept within the requirements of the standards for the The size related to ADUs, these are supposed to be smaller than the primary dwelling, so we have set a standard of no more than 40% of the total floor area of the primary unit, nor more than 800 square feet, nor less than 300 square feet, and not more than two bedrooms. So that is a criteria to manage the size. We wanted to build in some flexibility to that criteria, just in case, for example, if a homeowner had a larger basement area that was greater than 800 square feet, then there are, is an allowance for minor variances to be allowed for that type of situation. But that would be on a case-by-case basis. The number of occupants, for an ADU, we have set at a maximum of four. Oops, repeated my slide. On this slide, though, I have some photos that are of an existing ADU in the city. This is Dee Breitenfeld's home on Fairview Street, right behind the Dinosaur Resource Center, and many of you probably don't even realize that there is a complete unit attached to their home. The original home was built in 1953, and the unit was added in 1963 by Dee's father, and they have sometimes leased it out, they've sometimes had family members live in it, but it blends right into the neighborhood that Dee Breitenfeld's home has been there for over 50 years, 60 years. The parking requirement, which was an important consideration, is that in addition to the two required off-street parking spots, there will be at least one parking space for each of the vehicles that the resident of the ADU has. So if it's a single person, and they only have one car, then they need to be able to park that additional car off-street. And that parking area must be built to city standards. For a single-family residence, the minimum standard is that it is 12 feet wide and constructed with a gravel base. Density controls. This section is a fairly unique section of our code. This is in order to allow, or encourage, the distribution of these potential units in town, and within the urban residential zone, they need to be a radius of 300 feet from each other. That's about the distance of a standard block within our, our town, from street to street. And within the suburban residential district, the radius is to be 600 feet. There is some minor variance opportunities here as well, that the Planning Director or Designee can assign up to a 20% radius measurement, and that the property owner shall sign the affidavit before a notary at the time of application. We will be mapping all of the ADUs, so to keep track of them, and be able to control the density as applications come forward. This has worked well for the city of Boulder. This is a map that shows the dispersment of their ADUs that we had distributed to you with a survey that Boulder had done. They've had accessory dwelling units as attached to their homes, or inside their homes since 1982, and then added detached later on in time. Number seven, the maximum number of ADUs per lot is one, and if the primary structure in the older part of town straddles a lot line, because in the older parts of Woodland Park, we have narrow lots that are 50 feet wide and 150 feet deep, and many people have purchased double lots, two or three, in order to place one house on it. So if that home, or the ADU, straddles that lot line, we will require that the two lots be combined into a single lot. And that is a good thing for Woodland Park, so that we can eliminate a lot of these small lots in the older parts of town. Home occupations will be allowed, as long as they conform to the standards that are in the zoning regulations. They can't, they can be in either the primary unit or the accessory unit. It's not likely that someone would run a business in an accessory unit, because they can only use up to 25% of their livable space for that occupancy, so, but if a homeowner in their primary space is running a small business, then that would be allowed. Lastly, we encourage barrier-free ADUs that could accommodate people with disabilities. And section E of the standards deals with the non-conforming ADUs, those that are already in existence, and are in town but have not come through the permit process or been established. They will be considered legal, non-conforming ADUs at this time. We will try to map as many as we can, and I have spoken with the assessor, the tax assessor, Betty Clark Wine, and they do have a list of those buildings, or homes that they're aware of, that are leasing out space, because there is a different approach for property tax when there is a primary unit and a rental space. So we will obtain that list from the assessor and begin mapping these legal, non-conforming ADUs. And they will be considered grandfathered, and just as if we were to make a rezone change of an area, and that use is not conforming, but it will be a legal, non-conforming use. So with that, we would recommend, after a public comment portion, that you adopt, recommend approval to the City Council for the adoption of ordinance 1209. Thank you for listening through the review, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Will the legal, non-conforming have to come up to code?
No, they, they are pre-existing the law, so they are grandfathered. If, however, they make any changes, they're not allowed to expand that non-conforming structure. If they make changes, then they will have to come up to code.
Sally, normally the next step would be the applicants, and we really don't have an applicant, per se. But John, John Schaefer has led a lot of this, the charge, so to speak, on this. John, is there anything you'd like to get up and add, or, or add to this, at this stage of what we're doing?
I have a couple of questions. I need to give you a name and address. John Schaefer. I live at 425 Oxford Lane, here in Woodland Park. On page one of the ordinance, the third whereas, land use and growth action, fourth line down, housing action 1.1.2. I thought we discussed that at the last planning or work session, and it was agreed that the language that refers to mixed-use buildings, live-work units of the downtown was going to be struck.
Which is why we just referenced those actions, and didn't include them, the full language in the ordinance. So these are two actions in the comprehensive plan that refer to accessory dwelling units, but they also refer to a lot of other things. So it seemed to be a more simpler approach and less confusion by not spelling everything out within that action, but noting that they are making reference to accessory dwelling In other words, we can't really modify the actions in the comprehensive plan, because those are those are verbatim. Those are part of the comp plan. So what we did was just note them in the whereas as a reference.
All right.
Makes sense.
Not to me. I still don't like that language for the, from the perspective of an opportunity to engender some discussion that's really not related to ADUs before the council, I mean. But I will defer to your judgment.
There is one approach we could take is put dot, dot, dot in there and then you would be eliminating that portion, the live-work.
That's what I had done in my comments earlier, yeah. But I'd welcome any comments from the commissioners in that regard.
Sally, when you prepared this, I understand when there's a line through something. The red with an underline means what?
That's added.
But it's not in the final one?
Yes. If it's red and underlined, it is in the file along with the notes that I made tonight from the city attorney.
I'm just having a hard time finding certain things like we're supposed to obtain the city's determination of water supply and sewage. That is underlined and that's crossed out, but it's not in here.
No, no, that is crossed out.
No, it's underlined.
I'm sorry. That was what the, the utilities director wanted removed.
But it's not crossed out here, it's underlined.
You have a much earlier set.
That's not my fault.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What was sent in the package?
This was in my packet.
It's crossed out.
Today, dropped off.
Okay, well, the first three lines are crossed out and then the second three lines are added.
Agreed.
Yeah.
It's all underlined, not crossed out. That's what I got today.
That's what you got?
Yes.
Here.
We'll be going through this, I'm trying to figure out where all that go.
Yeah, see how the first three lines are excluded?
I understand. I just had, I just had early copy.
Do you want this one, John, to finish?
No, I'm okay. No, we're good. I just, I couldn't follow along, couldn't figure out what I was doing wrong.
I'm so sorry.
I couldn't find it in the final.
Sorry, John, that was placed in the master.
No.
My apologies.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Now I cleared it up at least now I didn't.
Yeah.
I wasn't going goofy looking at it.
Okay, John.
All right, next. On page three, which is Section B under eighteen dot thirty-three dot one thirty-five ADUs, permit required for new ADU, B five. An applicant whose application has been denied may reapply or appeal the decision in accordance with Chapter eighteen dot fifty-four. And that's appeal to whom?
All appeals to the zoning officer's decision is to the city, is to the Board of Adjustment.
Right. City council's not in that loop.
No.
Okay. Okay. I think the Boulder map or the chart there showing the dispersion of the ADUs is, is good. And I know you planned to use it before the council. Those are the only comments or questions I have then. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for all your work on this.
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions for staff.
Oh.
If I may.
Sure.
Page two. B three, where we talk about additional capital fees, da-da-da-da-da. As a, as a practical matter, how many single-family residences in the city have been constructed after June one of twenty-twelve? And you've probably got it pretty close to the right number.
It's probably about seven.
Yeah, I thought it was less than ten.
Yep.
Okay, so that's not, that's not going to be a big player.
Not right now, but as it grows along, it's important to have that in there because that is our new system.
Okay. Jumping up to B two, talking about what the applicant has to do, you know, submits drawings, specs, et cetera.
Yes.
Is, is, is someone either from planning staff or, you know, the code gentleman actually going to go to the site and see what they say they have done, they have actually done?
Yes. As part of this process, first the zoning development permit will be reviewed by the planners. And we often do a site visit even when we have an application or we look at it on an aerial so that we get a feel for the context with which this permit is being requested. If there is a need for a remodel or an addition or a major change, then that triggers a construction drawing and a plan review by regional building department. Then a building permit is issued to a licensed contractor. The licensed contractor is required to call in all the applicable inspections. Our inspectors from regional building department will do the structural, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing inspections as well as the final inspections. And the city staff also does a final inspection as part of that. And we would have the check that the affidavit, what the applicant, the owner has agreed to is indeed what is on their site.
Excellent. What about, what about for the renewal? Will you folks or somebody go out, you know, rather than just accepting an affidavit, you know, make sure, yeah, we still love the parking places and, you know, all the conditions are, are as they should be?
You know, it's really, we would take their word for it unless we've had a complaint or if we have noticed something. We typically would not go out to double-check unless we feel it is necessary to do that.
How about, how about in the early years, the, the primary sponsor of this legislation did an estimate, a tenure estimate for the number that potentially could be permitted. And certainly, certainly during the early years, those numbers will probably be fairly low. Might it make sense to just take a quick, a quick look, see, you know, when you've only got four, five, six of them? I mean, I understand if you get to thirty and they aren't on staggered renewal dates, they're all on Feb. one. So I can understand if you had thirty, you know.
Sure.
You don't, you don't have a big staff. But during the, during the early years, particularly as we're kind of getting the ball rolling here, would it make sense, and it wouldn't take a long time to do so.
No.
To see, yeah, yeah, okay, looks like they're doing what they, what they say they're doing and there's the affidavit and renew them.
Sure, we can always do a site visit and we do do quite a few site visits for proposals that are coming in, so. Town's small.
Yes.
While you're looking, let me ask one question. Where it's, it's, it's by owner, not by the property.
By owner.
What's probably going to happen is things fall through the cracks. So I buy a house from you, you forget to tell me, or I don't know that I have done, I have done by February first file something. So I was never informed at a closing or by the seller that I had to do that. How are they notified?
They'll be notified because we'll be sending letters out at the end of the year that they need to come in and do.
They'll be sending them to an individual where it may be forwarded and not to the occupant of that address.
And if we don't hear from them, we will be following up with the new owner.
Okay, okay. So rather than have us have to worry about it, there's an onus put on the new owner
Yes.
To say, if you want to continue to have that mother-in-law quarters or whatever it is, something has to be done.
Yes.
Rather than us have to take initiative about every one of those things all the time. Put some responsibility on that.
Yes, the responsibility is on them, but we will follow up because we have by February first, they all need to re-sign their affidavits.
And if they don't, we'll be asking them to remove their stove?
Yes.
Well, I would think that real estate agents that are on top of what's happening, I mean, there's certainly a selling factor is that this house has already been approved for, you know, for this program, that's a good selling feature and they're going to include that in the real estate contract.
Good point.
And maybe a letter out after this gets through council to all of the real estate people saying, remember, this is something that's different and you may look at that in your closings and that to do that. I think we ought to send them some.
That's a good point too, a little education for the real estate.
Well, I think they have a monthly meeting or quarterly.
Something like that, something for MLS or something like that.
You know, on a regular basis that that could be.
Yeah. Just because they missed the date, that doesn't mean they can't reapply and get it done. That's what, that's what we want them to do, we want them to keep it current.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Berman?
Yes, existing ADUs. I was encouraged by your discussion that you'll be mapping where are they, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I certainly understand the case law supports grandfathering these units, just like we grandfathered signage when we worked with the sign code, God knows how many years ago. There's a big difference between a sign and a living space. And it seems to me that now is the perfect time, the ideal time in fact, to deal with these existing units. Now granted, you know, there aren't just four or five of them, there may be, what, twenty or so? I mean, we just don't know. Probably less than thirty.
Yes.
Maybe somewhere between twenty and thirty. And I believe that the city has an obligation, not a legal obligation, mind you, but I believe the city has an obligation to, even though they're legal, to conform them. And I might direct you to the fifth whereas on the first page. It benefits the public health, safety and welfare to promulgate standards, blah, 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 blah. Parking demands that unregulated accessory dwelling units may have on neighborhoods in the community. And I believe in that. And I guess I'm a little concerned. You were courteous enough to drive me around and have me look at some of these existing ADUs and certainly we didn't look at all of them. Some of them appear to be quite old and, well, for example, you know, what if there was an improperly vented stove or heater in one of them? And, and in fact, it was occupied. I mean, at this, at this juncture, we don't even know how many of them are, are even occupied. But I, I really would like to see a more concerted effort than mapping to deal with these. And I, I feel pretty strongly that it's the city's responsibility to do so.
But if they're grandfathered in, how can you do that? You can't now go in and say, okay, well, this doesn't meet code, this doesn't meet code and this doesn't meet code when it's grandfathered in.
Yeah, I understand.
And it's is as it is, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So you, we have no.
I understand that.
I mean, I guess it wouldn't hurt to say, hey, you know, you've really not up to code, but there's nothing behind it.
It does seem like there's some exposure just based on the fact that we, the city, knows they're there.
There's no exposure. And to do.
I don't think there's any legal exposure, no. I agree with that.
Yeah.
But it, it does seem incumbent to me for the city, you know, particularly since we only have a hundred of these things, you know, it'd take you the rest of your career to chase them all down. And I'd like to see something, something stronger than mapping.
Sally, don't we have to post this as a legal statement in the paper?
Yes.
All these, all these changes, the city has a responsibility. I think they're published in the Courier.
Yes.
So we've met that requirement of notifying the public of that change from that standpoint. The difficulty on doing inspections is we keep having different building codes. And something was built in the eighties to one standard, doesn't have to be changed if it's different in the two thousand and one building code, so.
That's something that bother you.
Unless you go in and change something. Yeah, so you could, I mean, what a nightmare that'd be to say, was that venting okay back then and it's not now, you've got to change it. So that, that, that becomes a can of worms at some point, I would think.
I wonder if there's some incentive that we could provide to encourage people to register their existing dwelling units so at least they be part of the existing.
I wouldn't.
But if, if we gave you a thousand bucks, would you?
No.
No?
Because you're going to make me come in every year and report?
But you also could lose it.
I don't think that that would work, Steve, I really don't.
There will be a misconception among the people that have them to say, oh, boy, my property's going to be commercially rated now. And we have to dispel some of those myths because that just doesn't happen.
Well, and your taxes are going to go up.
That's just not going to happen.
It's just not going to happen.
And they're better off doing that because technically, if they didn't, they could lose it because they forgave, forgot to report. But you, you know that people are going to say that, well, I'm going to be commercial now and all of a sudden that's gospel because somebody believed it's true. You know how that happens. But we can guard against that by having Norma put that in the paper.
Well, I'm sure you could get with staff to put it in layman's terms so that it's, you know, people will understand it in the paper.
The few units that may exist out there, we have not had any neighborhood, neighbor complaints on these. What we have had is one complaint of another apartment unit owner who feels that they're competing with them and they asked that we enforce our code. She, when I explained to her that we probably will be, we would like to be adding accessory dwelling units to our code, she was perfectly fine with that. She just wanted everybody to follow the code.
Move all those little grannies out and make them pay apartment rental somewhere. I understand.
Yeah.
Wow. So there's not been complaints dealing with impacts associated with any of the known existing units?
There's more positive things than negative that will come out of this. I truly believe that.
Oh, I do too.
Yeah. There's more positive.
It's a huge plus for this area. With aging.
Anybody else?
Aging, I'm already aged.
Okay, we'll exclude you then.
You've stopped, you don't do it anymore. Any other questions, any other comments? Questions to Sally, staff, anybody?
I, I have a couple of comments on page two. Bottom third of the page, B, permit required for new ADUs. Under one, the wording there has been corrected, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In part two, nitpick, college professor, forgive me, city is in lowercase in Senate, in line two and line four, which is inconsistent with the rest of the document.
And you'll, you'll find that when it gets codified, they use city in. And you'll, you'll find that when it gets codified, they use city in all lower cases.
As long as it's consistent, I don't really care.
Okay.
Same subsection two, the bottom three lines there, right above three, I really struggled with the wording of the next to the last sentence. Blah, 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 blah. The owner may lose the right to use the ADU due to the effect of the density standards. I, I had to read it six times to figure out what that meant. A suggested wording, and that's all it is, is right to use the ADU comma, as specified in the density standards contained in subsection such and such. The effect part just kind of threw me when I was trying to mull through it and that's just suggestive to me.
If I can run that by the attorney and...
It's whatever you, whatever.
Yep.
On page four, number six. Density controls. Why did we choose 300 feet in the commercial zone district and not 600 or vice versa?
Most of the commercial area is in that older part of town that has existing houses in them. So they are similar to the urban residential land pattern or subdivided areas. So that's why we chose the 300 foot radius.
Okay, I just didn't remember that particular discussion.
Good question.
I have no further comments.
I just have a comment. I'm so glad to see, and I haven't been here for a couple of months, and I'm so glad to see that this was followed through and it was done because I do, again, with the baby boomers, you know, I've just learned a really big lesson that thank God my daughter lives with me because otherwise I wouldn't have been able to stay in my home the last two months. And I think that this is going to really help more and more seniors be able to stay in their homes, be able to afford their homes. And even the younger couples moving into the area, you know, you, if you watch, you know, DIY and, you know, Property Brothers and stuff like that, you find that this is really becoming popular to have rentals in your home to help offset your mortgage. And so I just want to thank you guys and really, I'm proud to be able to say I was on the planning commission and did this. So thank you.
We've gone from a city that has to live in the shadows saying, don't you dare tell anybody that I have a, I have a mom living downstairs and I have an oven for her to cook in, which I'm illegal now to say, we don't have to worry about that anymore. And I think that's really good for our community.
And maybe it will bring some people forward to get inspections done to make sure that everything is to code. You know, it could, I don't know if it will or not, but there's always a possibility.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We now will open for public comment. We now will close for public comment. We will now look for rebuttal for applicant. We will look for planning commissioner, ask any final questions. Are there any final questions?
No.
Okay, now we would express an opinion that a motion could be.
I will make the, Sally, I'm not sure how to do the motion.
Move to recommend approval of ordinance number 1209 as with the comments or the amendments that were suggested.
There you go.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second? We would consider a vote.
Okay, thank you. DeVoe?
Yes.
Probst?
Absolutely.
Rollinger?
No.
Schrader?
Yes.
And Standard?
Yes.
Motion carries for one. Thank you.
At this point, as that was the main thing on the agenda, is there anything from, from the audience that you'd like to talk about before we move into reports discussion and finally? Any comments from?
Would you please, Mr. Rowland, approve the vote for planning commissioner on this matter? Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Sawyer, thank you for attending. Chairman, as the chairman, I don't have a report. Anybody have any reports they'd like to discuss? Planning director?
I just have one item and that is that our next meeting in March, we have no cases, so we would like to take a break and come back at the end of March on the 27th. We will have a case at that time. So we have a conditional use permit for residents in a commercial zone. We're seeing quite a few of those now.
That's the first March 8. I can see the calendar.
Week after this, 13, thank you. March 13. So thank you for all your hard work on this and get to have a break.
Anybody else with anything for the pleasure of the commissioner? In motion to adjourn?
I am.
Adjourn.